I call this meeting to order. It is ten a.m. Okay, real call, sir.
Commissioner Gallagher.
There.
Commissioner Mullins.
Aye.
Commissioner Mullin- uh Wilkinson.
He's out of the meeting.
Yes, so we have a court press call.
Okay, thank you. Uh as you wish, stand before the invitation and question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the time you've given us on this earth. We thank you for the wonderful place you've given us to live. We ask that we act in accordance to your will today and your grace. We act that our- I ask that our actions be wise. Thank you, Father, for all that you are. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, consent of justice consists of the minutes of last week's regular meeting. Uh the monthly reports of both the quarter of these auditor and cell phones tapped in or bested with cooking. Uh I'll add, do I have a motion? And I second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh no, there are no pivotal items. Bit opening for a scanning project. I think we only have one bit. Can be publicly open? At the speed of light.
This company has provided the service in the past.
I think it's one of few that do that, isn't it?
This what?
This one, about the only company.
Yeah, it's pretty specialized.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. That's our order. We will not act in this today. The Jay and the auditor's office and clerk's office will get copies of it and they'll make sure everything's done per requirements. And then we'll maybe act on that specific. Okay, that's the end of the bit opening. Uh upgrade of charter internet services, Dan.
They invoke an IT department. Currently, our infrastructure that we have in our internet is on a charter coaxial connection between all of our county buildings. We've got some issues in the area here that need to be addressed with the infrastructure on our internet provider. So we're looking to upgrade from coax to fiber network. Now, there will be an increase in each of these county buildings' monthly charge. Um we've spoken with the auditor's office and they understand that they will be able to accommodate the budget to fill the budget of those county buildings. Our phone system runs on VoIP system, which is the voice oriented protocol, and basically the internet. Um and when we have any four elections next year on that whatever road, we need to have that infrastructure in place handling of calls that are to happen. And it's not just for voice as well. Coax customers, fiber customers, when something happens, we'll get to you later as far as the charge of coax cable customer. Fiber customers, they have a service over there that they have to maintain at ninety-nine point nine percent uh upgrade per up- uptime. So we would know that we would be on the top pool list should the uh problem with the internet go down. So my recommendation that we upgrade. It will take approximately ninety to a hundred twenty days for charter to build a fiber network out.
Working days?
Working days. So this is gonna go into next year. Obviously, we won't be charged uh monthly until after the first year prior to the federal reelection. So if we can get the authorization from the commission to start this process of the build out, we'll be able to have that in place by first month or two in next year, so.
Okay, and this is your recommendation, Mr. Jackson? And you have it in budget next year?
Yeah, it was advised to the auditor's office that each of the offices that provide will pay the monthly charge, that they increase that that line item for the infrastructure upgrades.
All right, without motion?
On the recommendation of Dan Dunn for IT, I would move that we go for the upgrade of charter internet service, coax fiber.
Okay, I second that. Any questions?
Fiber.
Uh. Had to do with the order it was. Okay, uh. Does that affect our upgrade of this room for courthouse?
It will, yes. Um so I know you're right. It'll upgrade, you know, anything that touches the internet or connectivity. Um so right now, we have multiple desktops, multiple users on the Wi-Fi. Our security that we have on there as well, it'll all make things roll a lot easier, a lot less lag. So they can be able to not have those issues with any uploads and downloads.
So most beat up processes.
Most people that must be at the process, especially now with a lot of offices utilizing um the internet upload data, download, etcetera. So it'll definitely increase that productivity, so.
We've done a lot of electronic upgrades in this room. And that's all been, not all of it, but it's been always watching out for the eventual use of this room for court. It's gonna be more and more important as time goes on.
Absolutely.
So, so it's something we've been looking ahead and trying to get done for. Any other questions, Congress?
Um I was saying, we have something with our website. We have a board management, so eventually you guys will be able to find our agenda, any of the like documents that go along with the agenda for these meetings. If you have a tablet or your cellphone, you'll be able to pull it up in here. And if we have the faster internet, you'll be able to follow along and that kind of stuff. You can take your own notes. People will take their pride of notes in it. And it'll all be on your cellphone, on our website. But with this slower internet, that would be a little harder to use, but it's something we have coming.
No more questions, comments? Okay, have motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, uh Mitchell Pass Road, uh Mr. Hagan and Ms. Dunsey, come on to speak this up. Start out with your name, please.
Go ahead.
Several months ago, we was here before talking about Mitchell Pass. And we told what we had to do in order to stop the people from on top of the hill coming down, crashing our boat and tearing it up. Putting ditches, uh driving on the eastman, there can be ditches there. Uh bits where the side of this, well, they drive right there. Now the water goes into the road because they drive any way they want. Well, we did what we were told to do. And the police informed us that, you know, once it's closed, if something happens, they will come out and respond to it as well and check into it. Well, so uh last Saturday, I believe it was, I put-
August the eleventh.
The post on both sides of the road, which is ten feet opening. And we were told the people that are there on Mitchell Pass, on the hill, had to have keys to that gate as well. Well, we didn't even get the gate up. We had the post there and the eastman, we put fence on the eastman so they don't fly on the eastman because they were telling you that. Well, they tore all of that down. And I called the police, she called the police.
By police, you don't miss her for.
The county police. The county police.
And they informed us, there's nothing they can do because it's civic.
Who tore that up then?
The people up on Oak Ridge Trail. They, they know we all down on Mitchell Pass don't go across the creek and we do not go up Oak Ridge Trail.
And it's messed up.
But everybody from all over, Farmington, Delo, Petose, Ledwood, David Crossing.
They take it as a shortcut.
Everybody, Park Hills, they all take it as a shortcut because they stated, I stopped when, uh we were working on the road laying rock. I was laying, we have rock load in. I stopped three vehicles and told them that this is a private road. That we appreciate it, you all stick off of it because we're tired of it being tore up. They said, well, this is a county road. And I said, no, sir. I said, you can go down to the county commissioners, they'll tell you this is a private road. And it is privately maintained by all of us. And they said, well, I'm sorry, I didn't know. We were told this is a county road. And I said, well, I was told that at one time too, but I found out it is not a county road. The police at first said that they would back us up because they knew there was gonna be opposition out there from up on Oak Ridge Trail. And now they're saying they ain't gonna do nothing.
Dan, you got, uh any other comments for you?
Uh yes, um but some of the people came out, realized like we're talking to you guys right now. We're talking to them like we are now. And we showed them why we-
We threw the pictures of what they did.
We showed them why we was closing the road off. Because we showed them the ditches where they tore it up. And every year, we put in almost fifteen hundred on gravel. Gravel and cheap, and you work on the roads probably, you know what I'm saying. And we had friends who, you guys don't come down and you don't fix our road. You don't do nothing. But you drive up and down, you uh drag race, you do whatever, and we're tired of it. But we showed them why we was closing it. Just like uh after the meeting we had the last time. They even had a car down by the creek went on fire.
That was in March. Uh somebody stole an SUV. Uh I guess they couldn't get across the creek, so they parked it and they set it on fire and it could have caused a forest fire because it was close to the woods.
Right, but, but that's why we told them, this is why we're closing the road off. Because we're tired of this. This is, it's not a dumping yard. This is not where you can uh drag race and that. This is our road we wanna maintain. And we got enough problem with people that live on that road because we got people out there that won't even maintain in front of their property. And they should. And we understand the county changed the policy to private roads. And like he, he has no say so about it and all that. They're gonna change the policy for gravel road people. Then they need to put a law in there because, well, property owner association, get that going. Now, everybody here, be honest. Who would have someone in charge of property owner association if they're doing drugs and alcohol? And the ones that ain't doing it, they're of an age, they just wanna be left alone. They wanna retire peacefully. You know, but that's one of the choices they give us, property owner association. Move is the other one. How many of you guys, uh at your houses, would you get up and move just because I'm playing my music real loud or drag racing in front of your house? No, you would not. And then the other one, take them to court. We got a bunch of idiots out there. And I say idiots and that because they think, you know, you make a map, they'll come down and burn your house, burn uh your equipment and all that.
And that's good on already.
And that's why we're trying to get the law to where it helps us as well. Because we don't want the county to come in and run the road that we live in. But we need some type of law put in effect where the police can come out there and do things. But right now, they can't because they say it's private road. We have no authority out there, no law. And we're getting tired.
I put signs up like they said when we was first closing the road off. And I put up signs, dead end, no outlet. Well, the one up on my, uh right at the uh-
That metro road.
Just before the Mitchell Road ends, I put a sign there, dead end, no outlet. Well, it was taken off within matters of an hour after it was put up. And some guy came down and threatened uh my neighbor because he was digging a trench across the road. Blocking the road so they can, you know, stay off. Instead of coming, keep coming down and tearing up our road. Our road was so doggone bad, we could not even get out of our driveways last winter. And they're still tearing up. So now I put signs out, private road, landowners only. Well, somebody up on Oak Ridge Trail tried to take it off of the tree.
Anything you do-
And it couldn't.
Anything you do out there, the characters on that hill will come down and destroy it.
Okay, now you said that there's been a change in policy on gravel roads. What's this change? I don't know.
They're private road now. And by private road, unless, unless it's uh, the police can only come out there. This is what I was told. Now, is if there's a violent, you know, uh people fighting, uh shooting at each other, rape, uh children abuse or whatever, then they will respond, or fires, they will respond. Or emergency like heart attacks. But if I come over and I'm in his face, uh and talking trash or whatever, they won't really respond to that unless I threaten his life. If I threaten his life, then that's a different, because now I made a, a threat. You know, but otherwise, no. Like if I, if he tells me, hey, you can't drive up and down my road tearing it up like you're doing, they won't respond to that. And that's garbage. You know.
Dan, what's your thoughts?
Because, you know, law needs to be changed to help us.
Dan Bullock, I'm the sheriff there. The, when we deal with this wide often throughout the county with private roads all over the county and uh also with the lake developments, Goose Creek Timberline.
Yep.
Uh Lake Tana, uh it's private property. And the way I explain it to people a lot of times, if uh out on my farm, if I wanna drive a hundred mile an hour across my farm, I can and there's nothing the law can do about it. Uh sheriff's department can only enforce state law and federal law on private property. We're not allowed to come in and enforce speed limits or anything like that. Now, the property damage that's done, like officers took a report of it.
Yes, he did, sir.
Send it to the prosecuting attorney. Uh whether it's gonna be in the charge or anything done from there on, I, I do not know. I know there's an easement there, but uh it's, it's not a county road, never has been.
Nope.
And the easement is with the property association.
Well, we don't have a PLA.
Neither one. Oak Ridge nor Mitchell Pass has one.
There, there are no, there are no easements there at all. What, for your property where you live?
Yeah, easement, we have a road easement. But that's for the property owners that live on the road, not for every Tom, Dick and Harry wherever else.
Exactly, I understand that. But, but I'm just trying to say there is an easement there. Through your property association for your people that live there.
Yeah.
Right.
But we ain't having no complaints there. Our complaints is where everybody comes in and they say it's a county road and they, they don't see uh where, why we're closing it off.
Right, the people that live up above.
Up above and others.
And they have other ingress and ingress out of their property.
They got uh-
So they, they, and I know they use excuse, we need that to get, get out here. They do not take them out up above. So that's no excuse there.
Now, while they, the officer that was down there the last time, he stated that, okay, we understand, you, you live on Mitchell Pass, you got the right. And the two that live up on the very top of the hill, they own property on Mitchell Pass down to the creek.
Right.
And that, so we do have to put a gate up. And they were in agreeance until Oak Ridge made a rock on them. So now they changed their mind.
Right.
And anyway, we were setting it up just like it was uh when the officer was down there in, in the agreeance.
Right.
And uh the people up on Oak Ridge, it was, they told me personally, the lady did, that they know we don't go up Oak Ridge Trail, they know we don't cross the creek. But that's beside the point. They don't want uh Mitchell Pass closed because they, even though they got Pine Ridge to go out on, they got Oak Ridge to go out on. They wanna come out Mitchell Pass and go to Mitchell Road instead of taking David Crossing or go down thirty-two and take Park Hills like the rest of us.
Right, I, I understand it. Now, where you have, where your property association, property you own, you can do whatever you want there. The people up on Oak Ridge know we do not have an easement through there.
That's what we told them.
So, so you couldn't block it. If, if it becomes a problem, you call us, we will come out.
I did that.
We did.
But, but we're not gonna come out and, and, and start hollering everybody to jail.
Well, right now, it's a gray pickup, primer gray pickup with some blue on his right finger. He's one of them.
I was gonna suggest something to you that, that we did. And we do this other place in the county, we have people put up like these deer cams and stuff and get pictures. Pictures can go a long ways. I know where they do, they hear the picture, there's a license number, there's a guy. We can do something with that. Just because you know that it's somebody from up there doing it, we, we can, I'm very much with that.
Yeah.
Uh when I go in front of the judge, uh say, uh Sheriff Bullock, have you known this person? Well, everybody knows that he's the one that done it. Well, that won't fly in court.
Right.
But if you can get us some evidence like that.
Well, they do it when we're in bed or right gone.
And that's why I'm talking about the infrared cameras, like they use in uh trails and-
By hot.
Yes. And, and uh they do not flash or anything and get some pictures and stuff. We will certainly take uh, take it and go to the prosecutor with it and see what will be done.
Okay, ma'am, what are you suggesting, asking the county to do this?
Well, what I'm asking is, you know, I understand what the sheriff just said, you know, and I understand that. Because they got other jobs to do besides that. But we need some type of law put in there to where, you know, like the people that live on the road, if private road, they should be required to maintain that road. But, but private road, there is not unless you take them to court. And it doesn't really help the road.
Trying to figure out how I would word that law, but uh you've gotta maintain your driveway by county law. And I, I don't know how that would work.
Okay, uh when, when it was unimproved road and that, you probably know about the improved roads and that, or have you heard of it?
Don't know.
By, by unimproved road, and it's basically almost the same as private road except if, if I live on this side and you live on that side of that road, you have to maintain half that road, the side that you're on, and mandatory. But if they didn't, you could inform the police and they would come out and they would enforce them to do it or to give them a ticket or something.
But in, in, improve it to what?
By private road, you can't.
Improve it to what standard? What if that guy over there wants concrete and you want gravel or dirt?
Well, if it's improving the road, it don't matter as long as it's approved and you can drive. Because right now, we got potholes. And I don't, I don't, I think you've been on that road before, haven't you?
We went through it once.
Yeah, it's potholes.
Well, it's got cause-
And I don't see how they come down that creek road with the low riders.
When we had rock laid, when I laid rock on there, it took eight tons to fill in one of them holes that they had created.
We do eight hundred mile, lay miles of road. Yeah, we know.
And, and that's why we keep trying to fix it. But, but on top of the hill, you know, if we put cameras out there, there's not hardly any trees right by the road itself. So if we put a camera out there, like the sheriff was describing, it would be pretty well exposed. And if they see it, I can see them stealing. And that, so if they steal the cameras that we put out, what do we do there? Besides report?
And that's what, you have to report it, but it, it's a, it's a situation to uh to do without somebody just setting that around the clock.
Right.
Yeah, because they do it when everybody's in bed or they're gone. Like my sign, they tried to take, uh rip my sign off while I'm in church. And people up there, well, they got trees and they can't see.
And we watch it during the day and that.
Well, we can't do anything to do that.
Legal invites.
Legal. Uh, uh Dan, any other thoughts?
Just, just don't hesitate to call if you have a problem or if they're doing property damage on your property, where you're putting the, the fence up, is that association property, is it common property or it belonged to somebody?
It's right on the side of the road. Okay, the road, that's one example. This is the road, the eastman on both sides, that's where we put it, so they-
Who does that property belong to?
Belongs to my neighbor.
And the other one belongs to-
And him and my neighbor is the one that put it up.
Okay, now the, the person that, that owns the property, they're the, you can't complain in their behalf. They have, they have a complaint with property damage if that's what is taking them down.
Well, my pro- my neighbor owns that section of the road in front of the creek. Plus, he owns property across the creek. But he wasn't worried about his property on across the creek. Because he made a bridge to go across the creek and walk up there if he wants.
Right.
But he, we were closing it on our side of the creek.
Okay, but it's not, not we, he was.
Well, he wa- well, we were helping.
That's what I'm saying, but, but he's, he's property, I mean, he's the only one that can complain
Right.
about him tearing his property down.
But like the sheriff uh that came out and then he replied and everything. And, but like he said, we can't do nothing about this. This is civic matter. You have to take it to court. We, uh this will not be, uh not called. If we call it again, he will not respond because he said this is civic.
Well, I think they're that. If, if you call and nobody responds, you call me.
Dan, property damage is a violation of the law that you can handle?
Well, like, well-
Yes, but, yeah.
But like-
Saying is, if you can't complain for somebody else's property damage, it has to be him, the guy don't have the property.
Well, he couldn't get out. He's had seventeen strokes.
Right.
And he could not get it out.
But we can come to him. We can take that complaint from him.
Yeah, well, I'll have to tell him because uh he was, he dumped it on us. Because of him being sick, you know.
If somebody comes up and says, that's my property, you can't complain in my behalf. I have to do that.
Dan, what about trespass? Does that qualify as a legal matter that you can handle?
It, it does and on, on trespassing and the prosecuting attorney advises us that we should just write like a traffic ticket or a summons to come to court or cause uh like third degree trespass.
Well, Oak Ridge won't listen to us by all. Uh because uh several of them, like the, the one I told you that was in agreeance with it as long as we put up a gate and gave them a key.
Right.
She made it perfectly clear that uh Oak Ridge had gotten onto them. They don't want the road closed. They made it rough on them. So they decided they didn't wanna have the gate up no more.
They're talking about selling themselves now.
Yeah, now they're, they're talking and uh
What's the question?
They said, why don't, why don't you, if you don't like the way it is, why don't you move? I said, lady, I own my property.
I'm bound to it.
I'm not gonna move. I said, and we're-
And if I were you and I put a gate up, I would not make the statement. Well, now you can have a key and come through, but you're not, I'd shut, just shut off.
Well, that's what we tried the first time. And, and my neighbor was, he's got a backhoe. He was digging a trench all the way across the road. He was closing it. Well, some guy in a real nice white pickup came down. He was gonna cross. Well, he threatened, no. The police was called. The officer didn't do anything. He told us we cannot close the hole, dig a trench across the road and shut it off. He said, there's people up there, they have the right. And so then-
But, but I can deal with that if you want to come and see me hold golf there for this meeting.
Okay, let me, uh, let me draw this discussion to a close. There is nothing that the county can do on this.
Right.
That it's not our road, it's not our property.
These are the-
Uh but please work closely with the sheriff's department, get his personal phone number. Work with them closely and see what we can get done.
Because that's what we're trying to do, you know, doing by the system. And, and you guys are tired too.
But your being here has made it more of a public issue, so the public moves now if that is not something-
Well, that's what we wanted.
But, but what I was trying to ask the gentleman of, if you work with the road uh city and that, I think you did. But what I was trying to do is see if there's any way of putting uh added, you know, uh a section added to private road where we have lots out there that-
We have no control over private roads.
Uh but you know what I'm saying, you know, that's what I was trying to hold for.
We can't spend taxpayer money on a private development.
Right.
We've got an official attorney general ruling. And I was supposed to let her back.
No.
So unfortunately, we, we can't spend that.
Right.
All right, well, we thank you for your input and so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go to the next agenda item, please. We're back in meeting now. Uh Stephen Grease, John Chambers, this is for the collector's office. Okay.
Morning. Pamela Williams, Secretary of Security, County Collector. Um I have two employees that work really hard and I'll just start with first one is Lisa Redman and she's been a clerk one for over five years. She not only performs her regular tasks of the day. Um she calculates trustee sales and includes calculating them by hand into a computer and processing payments. She's a backup for several people for return mail and things, so we've added- She's a backup for several people for return mail and things, so we've added some duties to her, and I would like to see her get a pay raise to that step two.
She just stepped through, so she is taking additional obligations, correct?
Yes, she is.
Okay, and uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, there are steps available for that, and do you have a budget for that?
I haven't got my budget filled out yet, but I was gonna, because of her part.
So when's this effective?
Next year.
Next year, okay, that's good enough. All right, uh, any other, uh, yeah, most, that's on your recommendation.
Oh, sir, you wanna do the, set hers several?
Oh, okay, there are two of them.
There's two.
Yeah, let's do two of them, yes, go ahead.
Okay, and the other one is Angie Eschery. She's been clerk one since two thousand fifteen. She not only performs her daily tasks, but she also has had a responsibility as far as taking care of all escrows, which includes coding them, uh, the files. She works very closely with the escrow companies and the homeowners. She has to research the property and she takes all the phone calls and answers their questions and tries to help them make sure everything is the way it should be. I, I'd like to also see her raised to from a step two to a step three.
And it's also effective next year?
Yes.
Do you have a budget for it?
I will put it in the budget.
Again, I'm not trying to be repetitive, this step two to step three, so obviously she's taking additional obligations, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we do have a step three already set, so okay, yes.
Yeah, I just make your motion.
Uh, and on your recommendation, we're, we're talking about the two, the, that motion.
Yes, I would do the, the one, then clerk one, clerk two, and the other, from clerk two to clerk three.
Now, second that, any questions? Yes, what?
Pam, do they meet the matrix schedule, the five years plus?
Uh, Lisa's been there five years plus, and Angie was a previous employee, and she came back to the office. And she has, next year she will be there, an additional five years.
When this goes into effect?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Dan. Uh, next item is similar, child support enforcement, it's the same, it's the same topic, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ariel Rapule, and I'm assistant prosecutor for child support. And um, I don't know how familiar, familiar you are with the way child support works, but um, everything the county pays for us is then reimbursed by the state. So our budget goes through you and goes through the state. And so, we recently lost, um, one of our employees is no longer with us, um, it's me, and then two women in my office that work for me. And one of them is now gone, so I'm now promoting the other one. Uh, the two positions we have in our office are administrative assistant and legal secretary. The woman that's still in my office is the legal secretary. And I want to promote her to a legal assistant and get rid of the administrative assistant, but I'll do that on another, once we've hired someone new. But um, I'd like to promote Kristy Morris to a legal assistant. Um, she's already at step six, so I wanna keep her at the same step, just change the job title because she's changing from secretarial duties um, to assistant and administrative duties.
So you're down an employee?
Yes.
And you're taking her with the additional obligations?
Right, but admini, I, I don't believe administrative assistant makes any sense in our office, every, everybody does legal work. So um, I'll change that at another date, once we hire someone new. But just for now, yes, legal secretary.
And so, since this is a replacement, do you have the budget?
Um, yes, yeah, we have.
Is this effective immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Questions? Oh, we haven't got a motion yet.
Motion.
Motion, aye. Second that now, any questions?
So the request was just for a job title change?
Um, I mean, it's, I, I've looked at the matrix, I wanna change, I mean, it'll, it'll be an increase in salary as well. Is that, is that the question?
Is that what you just, I was under the impression now she was changing the job positions, which would instantly for an increase in pay because of the additional obligations, that's what I was under the impression that made to?
Yes, that's what I meant. I'm sorry if that was a-
Okay, now, to be clear, there is a job title change and a pay change.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is your motion up here? Okay, I second that. Now, any other questions?
So, this request meets the matrix requirements?
I have a job title change, I don't know if that, uh, you don't have five years.
The step is the same as what she had before. So I wanna keep the step the same, but I just, I don't, I don't, she's not a legal secretary anymore, I wanna change her to a legal assistant.
Job title.
Right, which changes on the matrix the amount of money she makes.
Okay, sure.
Are you clear with that, ma'am?
So it's not like a level one, level two, level first? Right, it's not a level change, it's, I'm keeping her at the same step, which, which my understanding is the year requirement, so the step's the same, but just switching her to a different position.
Okay. And in that case, we don't have the five-year limitation, is that correct?
That would be correct, but I would also like to point out that she's down, you're down two employees, is that correct?
Right, I have, there's me and two employees in the office, one of them we're replacing.
You know, normally, the norm is we, we like to get that support, not support, even if you might leave them years of service in, but now they've been extraordinary service, hence down a couple of boys. At the end of the day, definitely something, in a small office anyway.
Right, yeah, very much.
Okay. All right, uh, any, uh, okay, we have a motion second, any questions? Hey, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, uh, metric or meeting, after the tax levy hearing next week, which will begin at ten AM, we'll have the regular meeting right here. Okay, any questions on that, by the way? We start the tax levy hearing at ten, proceed through that, determine that meeting, then we'll start up the new meeting, regular meeting after a very short break. Okay, other business, correspondence, public comments, departmental reports.
Just-
John, yes, you know? Just a second, Pam, I'll let John go. We started the new road work out at Buck Knocker Road.
We did the excavator on the right-hand side, that's where the new bridge is gonna go. We have, uh, as of today, finished up all of the rough grade on the new approach. And starting next week, we'll start digging the footings for the embankment on the bridge.
This uh, yellow uh, pipe work you see here is the old bridge, correct?
Yes.
And I think it's, uh, it's hard to see over here, but we're actually putting the new bridge beside where the old bridge is, and public can still cross that.
They can, it still has a fifteen ton weight limit, um, and that is because we repaired the bridge early part of this year, when MODOC came in and inspected. If not, they were gonna drop to six tons and we'll commit to court rest process.
Yeah, and they've done extensive work with uh, the property owners out there, actually trading land, uh, land for the new bridge versus land for the old bridge. So it's worked out well. So anyway, that work was started. And because they didn't have to shut down the road, they were able to do that in school session.
Yes.
Which would have been a real limiting factor otherwise. And that's a big go around there, it's many miles to go around that site. Okay, uh, uh, the treasures are our officials' report, we only have a couple items that are above the fifty-eight point one percent, that's the coroner and the commission. And the commission, that's a lot of utilities in that, that's, a lot of that goes to the commission. Uh, it's like, and we can't control the, the number of deaths in the county, so we should fit. Okay, now Pam, you had a report?
I was just gonna say that next Monday is the tax sale. So if anybody's in the courthouse, there, there's chaos out here. And I apologize for the office holders around, but we will get in and out as quick as possible.
Can you hold that?
We hold it right out here.
In this floor, in the-
In the courthouse.
It's a busy, hectic day, noisy.
But we're usually done up here on this floor about noon.
Okay, so everybody's warned, uh, this place will be hard to get here next month, it's coming up. Okay, any other departmental reports? Okay. Are you adjourned? I second, I'll holler in later, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate you coming.